Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for joining us today on the October 12th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Before we get started with our regular meeting, we are going to take a moment of silence. Last week, two of our students, Angel and Jay-Z, were unfortunately murdered. And so throughout our school communities, we've been taking time to celebrate and honor their lives and their legacies in Berkeley Unified School District. And we here in the board, on the Board of Education and in the school district, want to ensure that we do the same. Our magnificent students, Angel and Jay-Z, were more than just students. They were sons and brothers, cousins. And to many of our students in BUSD, they were friends. And so we will miss them, send love, respect and appreciation and honor to their families. So at this time, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Liz, whenever you're ready, you can begin with this bill.
Good evening and welcome. Bienvenidos. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will dedicate 30 minutes to public comment. At the end of the meeting, there is a second and final opportunity to provide public comments. So if you do not get to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay to the very end to do so. To participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand button. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Remember that if you wait to raise your hand until your public comment begins, you may need to wait until the end. So please raise your hand now. The board president will usually call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please write student at the beginning or at the end of your name. The board president will determine to set tonight speaking time at one, two or three minutes per speaker. And on an individual basis, she also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. While you are speaking, a timer will appear on your screen. If you are still speaking when your time is up, please finish your sentence, but try not to go beyond your time. Thank you. Después de unos procedimientos de inicio, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios de parte del público. Al final de la junta, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar y no lo pudieron hacer durante la primera llamada. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano ya, presionando el botón Raise Your Hand abajo de su pantalla. Para participar por teléfono, por favor, presione estrella nueve. Recuerde que debe hacerlo ya, ya que si se espera hasta que el inicio, el periodo inicie, tendrá que esperarse hasta el final de la junta tal vez. Presidenta Brown otorgará uno, dos o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Aparecerá en su pantalla una cuenta regresiva que le avisará cuánto tiempo tiene. Así, por favor, de terminar su oración cuando haya terminado su tiempo, pero traten de no sobrepasarse. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I now would like to call this meeting to order at 7:09 PM. Can you please begin with the roll call? Student Director Ian Siegel.
Present.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Present.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Ty Alper.
Present.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
President Khadija Brown. Present. Thank you so much. At this time, we need to approve our agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Julie. I was gonna say, a so moved will suffice. Thank you, Director Sinai. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Charles, can you please call the roll? Student Director Siegel.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
President Brown. Yes, and the motion passes. And this evening's agenda is approved. Thank you so much. Tonight, we have a very exciting presentation. As you can see, I'm lighting up because I'm really excited about it. But we have been working really hard on our Equity Showcases, which began last year. And our Equity Showcases were really to see how we made equitable improvements and provided equitable outcomes to our Berkeley Unified School District community. And so tonight, our presentation is on our CTE program, our Career Technical Education Program, because we know that pathways for our students is a great opportunity to ensure that they have equitable outcomes, equitable experiences, equitable opportunities in the future. And so tonight, I'd like to welcome the CTE team, who will begin our Equity Showcase presentation. Let's welcome them.
All right. Thank you so much for having us this evening. So hello, my name is Angie Wong, and I work for the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. This past spring, a small team of BUSD staff and I worked together to put together Maker Camp, which we ran this past summer at King Middle School and at Berkeley High School for 150 students that are currently in grades seven through nine.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Lenz, and I am the Makerspace Lead Teacher and a middle school STEM design elective teacher. I helped to conceptualize the Berkeley Maker Camp, develop the curriculum we used at King, and was also the site coordinator at King during the camp this summer. We designed Maker Camp to be a free, high-quality summer camp experience that focused on technology, engineering and design. Our long-term equity goal for the program is to diversify the STEM career pipeline. College majors and career fields in science, technology and engineering and math are not diverse. So we specifically aim to enroll students of color, as well as girls and non-binary students, as they are underrepresented in these fields. As you can see in the demographics chart here, we did enroll a very diverse group of students in the camp this summer. The earlier that students are able to experience STEM in a hands-on and fun way, the more likely they are to develop a lifelong passion for exploring STEM and pursuing it in higher education. We created the middle school camp that would spark students' interest in taking classes in the Career Technical Education Department, or CTE, at Berkeley High School.
Hello, my name is Win Skills, and I'm the supervisor of the CTE program. At Berkeley High, CTE pathways include classes in computer science, robotics, mechatronics, CAD design and fabrication, studio art, digital media, technical theater, fire science, law and biotech. The classes are highly experiential, college prep courses that provide career-connected learning, including internships and site visits to our industry partners. We want to introduce middle school students to the mini CTE pathways we offer well before they attend Berkeley High. It's a huge school, not always easy for students to know what exists. And we really know that the earlier we start introducing them and getting them excited, the better. Students often come in not knowing anything about the electives that we offer that teach real-world experiences. The photos here are of rising ninth graders that participated in Maker Camp at Berkeley High and some quotes directly from the students about their experience. During Maker Camp, they built and programmed robots, learned how to use Photoshop to design their own clipboards, which they then made using bandsaws, drill presses and laser cutters. We put the tools back in their hands. They also went on a field trip to the San Jose Tech Interactive. For many, this was their first time on the high school campus. We introduced them to our classes and our labs, some of our CTE staff, and connected them with older high school students that worked as peer mentors in the camp.
So here are some pictures from the camp at King and a few quotes from students that we got from a survey. We had students fill out at the end of the four-week camp. And to tell you a bit more about the camp, here's a video of one of our seventh grade participants describing the program and her experience.
Hi, my name is Isabella Renato. I'm in seventh grade at Woollett Middle School. I participated in Makers Camp at King this summer. During camp, we created stop-motion animation films, learned how to code using microbits, and we engineered games out of cardboard. We also got to do 3D print keychains, silk screen t-shirts and have field days and go on a bridge engineering trip to San Francisco. I really enjoyed the field trips because we got to got time, were able to learn how stuff works. When we went to San Francisco, we saw some old-time machines at the Mechanical Museum. Projects we did were a lot of fun, and I liked that you could do things at your own pace. I loved making a stop-motion movie because we got to be creative and edit it whatever way we wanted. I made my claymation movie about a teenage lung triangle, and I'm excited to do more and learn more about video making and editing.
Thank you to Isabella for sharing. All right. So to staff the program, we hired CTE teachers, instructional specialists and high school students. The two quotes on the screen here are from a survey that we administered to staff. And we've also got here a video of one of our instructional specialists talking about her job experience.
Hi, I'm Amory Gray, and I'm the media tech at Berkeley High School. I currently support nine classes, three photography classes, six video production classes. What I enjoyed most about working in Makers Camp was being able to work with middle schoolers. I'd never worked with that age group before, and seeing the creativity that flows out of them was quite the experience. And what I noticed about the students was their energy levels were through the roof throughout the entirety of camp. So they made, they were like really squirrely and inventive and really thrived off the hands-on experience.
So as I mentioned, we also hired high school students to work as peer mentors, some of whom were hired through the City of Berkeley's Youth Works Program. Others were hired through BUSD student workers. All the mentors were Berkeley High students who had to apply for the job, get a teacher recommendation and had to have some STEAM-based experience to qualify, usually through taking a CTE class. And we wanted them to have this experience so that they could effectively support our camp classes, which are in robotics, carpentry and design, coding, engineering and video production. The quotes here are from the end-of-program survey. And here, we also have a video of one of our mentors talking about his job experience.
Hi, my name is Iris Carter, and I am a senior at Berkeley High in the CTE classes I've taken throughout my Berkeley High career. I was ninth grade intermediate robotics, SL and HL computer science and mechatronics. It was my first time ever working with middle schoolers and being in like an area like that. It was my first job ever too, so I thought it was a cool like introduction to a job, you know? I learned a lot of discipline and patience with working with middle schoolers. I like, once you were able to teach them how to do something, then they would, then they had a most amount of fun like decorating their robots and like making their robots like sync up and have the same dance moves with each other. So I felt like just like, once you were able to teach them about how to do the thing or how to make a cardboard game or something, then their creativity just exploded.
All right. So in addition to serving students and all of our staff, we also administered a survey to parents and guardians and got a lot of positive feedback, as you can see here on the screen. And the feedback we got affirms that we're furthering our equity goal around student access to STEM education. So for example, one parent said her son, quote, "asked for STEM, but camps are really expensive and hard to afford," end quote. And she was talking about summer camps. Another parent mentioned their teen, quote, "enjoyed being with a majority of kids of color, and they felt connected and seen," end quote. And another parent said, quote, "this camp was really instrumental and encouraging my daughter to pursue STEM subjects," end quote. But as she also points out, there's still further work for us to do.
In our surveys, we also asked students, staff and families what they would like to see in the future regarding this camp. Based on their feedback and our own experiences this past summer, some ideas we had to expand Maker Camp are to run programming both during the summer and throughout the school year, to expand the grade levels of students that are served, and to add on internships and job opportunities for both students and camp staff. We found this past summer to be a very successful camp experience for everyone involved, and we hope to secure additional funding for the program so that we can continue the camp and expand it in the future.
This past summer was made possible through the generous support of Wareham Development in partnership with the Berkeley School Public Schools Fund, the City of Berkeley's Youth Works Program, and of course, BUSD CTE Department. So we would like to extend our thanks to everyone that made this possible and are looking forward to working, continuing this work throughout the year.
Well, thank you so much, CTE team. Also, thank you to our community partners that Win just mentioned, as well as our student Isabella and Ms., her name slipped my mind, the teacher who...
Amory.
Yes.
Amory and Iris.
She's at Berkeley High.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
And amazing, yeah.
Amazing and amazing, all of the, all of the above. But we really appreciate the presentation and for all of the work that you all continue to do, which makes the difference for our young people. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. Take care. All right, we will move to our next agenda item, which will be the report out from closed session. Vice President Babbitt, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Closed session began at 5:30 PM. All members were present for item 3.1.1. It was moved by Director Alper and seconded by Director Vasudev and passed unanimously by the board. For item 3.2, we heard an updating gave direction. That concludes, that concludes my report. Thank you.
It concludes it. Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt. Next, we will move to our first opportunity for a public testimony. Just as a reminder, if you would like to speak to the Board of Education, this is the perfect time to raise your hand using the raise hand function, or feature rather, on Zoom. If you are a student, please remember to put student or S either before or after your name so that you will be given priority to speak. We will now go ahead and begin our public comment period. And we will start with our first public commenter, who will be Lindsay Knofelt, followed by Jamila Dunn, with our last public commenter this evening being Leo Levinson. Can you please promote Ms. Knofelt whenever you get the chance?
Yes. President Brown, how much time are you giving today?
We are going to give two minutes, please. Thank you so much. The speaking timer has been set to two minutes. And Lindsay Knofelt will be our first public commenter. Okay. Hi, Lindsay. Whenever you're ready, this is perfect timing. I was just getting ready to put on the song and a dance to save some time. But whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Knofelt. I'm speaking today as a parent with two children in BUSD. As you listen to the progress report on the literacy settlement this evening, please take just a couple of things into consideration. First, this literacy settlement at its heart is to support students by promoting early and successful reading. That's our goal, and that's what we need to hold at the center of all the decisions and progress toward completing the actions. Second, in order to show true compliance with the settlement, we need to see the required data and professional development plans that are the core of the work. Consider, please, who loses in the scenario where BUSD does not achieve its goals through the settlement? It's the students who continue to be unable to read. We have a historic opportunity to right longstanding systemic wrongs, and we still have a chance to reach that. I urge the board to create a legacy of reading success by demanding true progress through proof of accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We will move to our next public commenter, who will be Jamila Dunn, followed by Val Sipuloni.
Thank you. Hello, my name's, excuse me. Hello, my name's Jamila, and I'm the parent of two children at BUSD. Last year, my kids were in kindergarten and second grade, and I'm wondering if they participated in the DEBOL's assessment. There was no communication from the school or either teacher about it, and I looked on Infinite Campus but could not find this information or any past assessment data. I know that my older child completed two assessments during the 2020-21 school year, and one set of scores was visible on illuminate, but that data did not migrate over to Infinite Campus. One of my kids is now being evaluated for an IEP for learning challenges around reading, and having access to his DEBOL's assessment would be very helpful for this process. I asked for the data, and I didn't get it. So from my understanding, parent engagement and access to student records is part of the settlement. Understanding and using data to improve teaching and learning are essential parts of the process and of partnership between school and home. I know I'm not alone in not being able to find the data on my own child, and this must change with a shared data system that's up to date and accessible for all. And I just really encourage you as board members to please continue to seek this information and update the systems and make this data relevant for all parties, parents, teachers, school education specialists, psychologists, administrators. There's really no point in doing it if we don't have access to the results. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the work.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Val Sipuloni, followed by Emily Baldwin. Hi, Val. Welcome.
Hi, and, and thank you. I appreciate everyone's time, and this is my first board meeting with the new superintendent. So thank you, Superintendent. I would like to speak briefly this evening about the bell schedule redesign process, which was first presented to the board in spring 2021. Three things I'd like to say. First of all, the committee that was formed at Berkeley High to address what is really a whole curriculum change is, is so poorly named that it is confusing potential participants. People think this is about changing the schedule when they don't understand that it's about changing the whole curriculum. So, so I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the, the process to date not being inclusive and not fairly representing Berkeley High by including parents, by including students, by, it, it does not look like the face of Berkeley High. The third thing is the timeline, as it's presented, is both vague and rushed. So, so what we've seen so far is just not commensurate with this great, great opportunity that, that we have in our hands to make curriculum so much more accessible for so many more students at Berkeley High. But the process is really, it doesn't match the, the importance of, of the occasion. So I asked the board to be very deliberate and, and careful in its reading of, of anything related to bell schedule or curriculum change at BHS. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Val. Next, we will have Emily Baldwin, followed by Katie Reese.
Hi, thank you. I'm Emily Baldwin. I'm a psychiatrist, and I'm the medical director of the adolescent inpatient unit at Herick Hospital here in Berkeley. I'm a former high school English teacher, and I'm also the parent of two Berkeley High students. And I also wanted to speak on the huge curriculum overhaul at the high school that's being proposed by the so-called Bell Schedule Redesign Committee. Speaking on behalf of a large group of concerned parents who have been trying unsuccessfully for almost two years to be allowed to participate in this process, we are extremely concerned that after the board sent this issue back to the school for further study over a year ago, the present committee doesn't seem like it's been up to the task. We've seen, instead of actual engagement, highly flawed surveys, data that actually contradicts the committee's own proposals and what seems like a general lack of rigor to support their work, in particular, looking at adopting models from schools that are even lower performing than Berkeley High on the very measures that we're hoping to improve. There are real problems with the current curriculum and schedule at Berkeley High, including huge issues around equity and engagement, as we know. And we have a once-in-a-decade chance for transformative change, to set up a schedule that works, that allows more students to participate in the amazing CTE program, for example, that we just saw. I mean, it's just spectacular what's going on. We can do something that benefits all students, that improves equity and engagement, and we have to get it right. I am begging the board to go back to square one and reform this committee so that parents, students, community members with relevant expertise, even outside consultants, if necessary, can be a part of this process so that we can think rigorously, scientifically, collaboratively about how to improve our curriculum and our use of time for all students. It's too important to do anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Katie Reese, followed by Cecily Rose.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Great. Good evening. My name is Katie, and I'm a parent of twin kindergarteners at Thousand Oaks Elementary School. I'm also an experienced secondary English Language Arts teacher and a reading specialist currently working in San Francisco. Tonight, I'm also looking forward to hearing the first progress update regarding the literacy settlement that aims to improve reading outcomes. We all know what the data looks like. Our schools fall short for far too many of our students in meeting the goal of graduating as fluent readers. Please, I ask you to engage with tonight's report with a sense of urgency. Change demands a willingness to adjust what isn't working in our schools. And that includes not only our Tier Two and Three intervention programs, but also our core reading program from Teachers College, a curriculum that has long been out of alignment with the standards set forth by the California ELA framework. Review and assessment of the core curriculum needs to begin now, not a year from now, as currently planned. I hope you'll ask questions about this issue tonight. Berkeley must seize this opportunity presented by the Literacy Improvement Plan and move quickly toward implementing an evidence-based structured literacy approach across all tiers, especially in grades K through three. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will actually have student Eva Levinson, and then that will be followed by Cecily Rose.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. My name is Eva Levinson, and I'm a ninth grader at BHS. I'm coming to you tonight to tell you about my experience being a child with dyslexia in Berkeley. I couldn't read in kindergarten or much at all in first grade. They pulled me out of class for reading interventions, but those didn't make any difference. I also got really anxious about reading by the time I was in second grade. I had a big vocabulary, but I just couldn't read. As it happens, I was lucky enough to have parents who could get me extra testing and tutoring. It helped. By the time I graduated from fifth grade, I was reading above grade level. Not every family can afford extra tutoring. What was I getting from it? My tutor used a phonics method called structured literacy that works better for people with dyslexia and for other kids too. that works better for people with dyslexia and for other kids too. BUSD doesn't. I'm here asking you to please adopt a new curriculum that works for all kids, including those with dyslexia. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Next, we will have Cecily Rose followed by
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you okay.
Hi, my name is Cecily and I'm here to speak about the bell schedule redesign process in terms of the four E's. Excellence, Equity, Engaging, and Enriching. No schedule is going to be perfect for all students, but in order for any new schedule or curriculum redesigned to be successful, we need community support and engagement. And in terms of excellence, conclusions need to be based on transparent, straightforward data. We have not seen this, as Emily mentioned, and one step I'll bring to your attention is specific support by teachers. We have not seen which teachers in which department support which model. There was one survey with vague questions sent out to 270 teachers and staff. There was no breakdown about which teachers responded and whether they were teachers or staff. We also need to know which teachers have already taught with the block schedule. The reason for this would be the teachers who haven't will need extra support. And we would need a consultant to make sure that all teachers are successful. This new teaching model. In terms of equity, parents have not been involved. The survey was responded to by 242 parents out of over 3,000 students. 66% of these parents were white, even though white students only represent 33% of the student body. And in terms of enrichment, we need to make sure that this new schedule doesn't affect our wonderful collective and summer programs. And in particular, one thing that was mentioned at the 9/22 open house was wanting to use the flex periods to make up for some of the issues with AP scores. The CLC is supposed to have this function. It's not working. We can't expect our flex teachers to teach all the different APs, chem and math. In terms of engagement, parents have not been engaged. We still haven't gotten answers from the 9/22 meetings. So for the next steps, please expand the timeline, allow parents to be involved, and we need to know about any funding changes that this will have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Steph Fleischer followed by Patricia Smith.
Hi there. Good evening. It's great to be with all of you tonight. I'm also speaking on the BHS schedule. My name is Seth Fleischer. I have two BHS students. I run a company that focuses on education and skills development. I am also speaking for an engaged, growing parent group that sees an incredible opportunity to overhaul the BHS schedule to improve college and career readiness, chronic absenteeism, and student connectedness for all students with particular potential for historically disadvantaged student groups. Nearly two years ago, BHS assembled a bell schedule redesign committee to explore overhauling the whole BHS curriculum. Since then, we've tried to engage and partner with the committee, but we've been rebuffed at every stage. This process has staggeringly significant implications. The goals of a redesign should be co-constructed by parents, students, and staff. Any proposed changes should then be aligned with those goals. But research and data analysis by the committee have been inadequate, biased, unscientific, and unrepresentative of Berkeley's diversity. The committee has provided no evidence that their proposed changes will result in their stated goals. We're opposed to their plan to replicate El Cerrito High School's block schedule. The current committee was not equipped to dive into the data, so our group has. And we can now demonstrate that El Cerrito's students, especially those from historically disadvantaged communities, significantly underperform their BHS peers in three key metrics. Limiting our benchmarks to schools in Alameda County as they've done is nonsensical. We should be searching out the best models nationwide from schools with similar populations. And a rigorous study should not start with a cost-neutral requirement. We should identify what's best for our students and then work collaboratively to explore what's possible. We urge you superintendent and board members to please put the immediate brakes on this process. The committee needs to be recomposed with diverse knowledgeable parents, students, staff, and board members and start over. And outside experts need to be hired. The school's meetings on the topic have been attended by a very narrow demographic. Give the committee a title that conveys the magnitude of its mandate. Let's use this opportunity to transform BHS together, not continue on a course with potentially catastrophic consequences, especially for historically disadvantaged student groups. Please give us a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Patricia Smith followed by Win Dolphin.
Hi Patricia.
Hello there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Dear school board members, I'm a parent whose child attends Berkeley High. I would like to bring a matter to your attention that you may be unaware of. I believe the violence I'm about to describe to you may be connected to the recent double homicide of the two BHS boys. I believe this because both Berkeley Police and Oakland Police have indicated this to me in person. My 15-year-old daughter has been the victim of several attacks led by a BHS student. This attacking girl student has always been accompanied by a mob of people. At least some of them also students at BHS. Each of these attacks have occurred within one and a half blocks or less from the main entrance to the high school. Each attack occurred immediately after school let out for the day or during lunch. During each attack, the mob accompanying this leader have filmed the incidents and posted them on social media. The administration is well aware of these attacks. They know who this attacking girl student is. There have been police reports made. After the first attack on August 19th in front of the Center Street Garage, the attacking girl and her mob beat up an older man who called 911 and had tried to break up the fight. I have video of this attack. I submitted it to the high school. No admin or anyone was around to intervene during this fight. After the attack on my daughter, the attacking girl beat up a middle schooler. There's apparently video evidence. The attacker bragged about it on social media. I have video of that. The second attack on August 26th, a member of the mob stole my daughter's phone. The third attack on September 8th happened in two parts. I'm going to leave a bunch of detail out. That mob include young adult men. After that attack, my daughter was terrified to return to school. She stopped attending. We applied to BIS. Took a few weeks to be admitted. During this time, the attacks continued in a different way. A male associate of the attacking girl, also a student at BHS, began threatening my daughter's best friend, who was also a student at BHS. After, oh yes, that friend of my daughter's was present at each of the attacks on my daughter. After a week or two of this associate boy threatening my daughter's friend, the boy attacker attempted to beat up my daughter's friend in the bathroom at BHS. He was expelled. There's been very little in the way of consequences for the attacking girl or any of the students in her mob. My daughter's friend is now leaving BHS for BIS. I'm asking the board, what is being done to ensure student safety at BHS? Both BHS and BIS admin admit to me that they cannot meet the needs of this attacking girl. Yet there have been nearly zero consequences. And what is being done to improve transparency? The school community, parents and guardians have no idea these attacks are happening. But you know what? The students know. They've witnessed the attacks. They've seen the videos. Some of them must be terrified, yet there's been zero communication to the school community. I think this is wrong. These kids are afraid to hang out with my daughter, wondering if they'll be the next victim of this attacking girl and her mob. I appreciate the time and effort that you guys put into protecting the safety of our children. Thanks for your time, service, and consideration. And I'm not sure where to go. I've spoken with Berkeley Police. I've spoken with Oakland Police. I've spoken with many an admin and virtually nothing's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Liz Charrick is going to reach out to you hopefully via chat. I'm sorry, there's echo.
Is there an echo? I'm not hearing it on my end.
Okay, maybe she's but Liz is going to reach out to you. I think she's going to try to get your information via the chat. We can follow up with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Next, we will have Win Dolphin followed by Just in case you didn't get a chance to hear me because of the echo. At next, we will have Win Dolphin followed by Leo Levinson. But actually Leo is here, so let's go ahead with Leo Levinson and then promote Win Dolphin whenever you get the chance.
Noted.
Thank you.
Khadijah, this is Rebecca Levinson.
Go ahead.
Changed my husband's name. So sorry about that. It's really me. Hi, everyone. You're about to hear from my oldest of four and you heard earlier from my youngest of four, both of whom have dyslexia. So when is my 32-year-old from my first marriage and Eva is my 14-year-old from my current marriage? I am a mom who has spent a lot of time watching the suffering of her children around the issue of being able to read. And they have very different stories because I was in a very different place in my life when I was in my twenties and had my oldest child than I was when I was in my forties and had my youngest child. I know that we together in the school district want the best for our children. My friend Peggy Scott says, "Love isn't about feeling, it's about action." And you heard tonight from Lindsay, you heard tonight from a number of other folks who are on this literacy committee imploring you to please, please, please look at the evidence and adopt a new curriculum K5. We know our kids are struggling post the pandemic. You have those numbers. And we have great research that supports other school districts that have chosen to double down on integrating this literacy curriculum that Eva mentioned earlier. And they're seeing extraordinary results. So in this moment in 2022, we can make history. We can change the trajectory of the children who had all that learning loss around literacy. And I'm hoping that you will show us love as an action in 2022. Thank you for your time and all you do.
Thank you as well, Rebecca. Next, we will hear from Win Dolphin followed by Cielo Rios as our last commenter for this evening. Hi, Win.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Win Dolphin. You heard from my mom Rebecca Levinson and my little sister Eva Levinson a few moments ago. By the time she was born, my mom was remarried. But when I was a kid and I was equally having a terrible time with reading, she didn't have the funds to put me in tutoring. Being a single parent in the Bay Area has always been hard. Like my sister, I could not read, but had an above-average vocabulary. I was not given interventions by BUSD despite my mom advocating on my behalf. By the time I got to high school, I was alienated from academics. The anxiety of feeling less than my peers consumed me and I chose to drop out at 15. Then when I went to college after getting my GED, I didn't have the skills necessary to succeed. And now I'm a small business owner and I still struggle with everyday emails. And I know that my life trajectory could have been very different if I would have had the support that I needed in those really formative years. Please support a phonics-based learning program that support kids with dyslexia and other reading difficulties. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you as well, Win. Our last public commenter for this evening will be Ms. Rios.
Hello. First, I just wanted to say that I look forward to hearing more about ending racial disproportionality at BUSD. I also wanted to thank you for your attention on updating facilities at Emerson. I have been thrilled to hear that work is beginning at Emerson using Measure G funding to make our school site accessible and safer for our community. I would like to ask about what the next steps are in terms of what is being prioritized at our school site and who has this authority as the district looks at site updates. I have mentioned this before, but the facilities needs assessment that was completed by HY Architects for Emerson and other schools around the district are full of contradictory information as well as incorrect calculations for facilities condition index, which is called FCI at our site and others. Given the radical changes in the world since the final version of this document was completed in 2019, as well as a new sense of needful spaces in light of public health, climate change, and wildfire risk, I would like to know how BUSD can utilize feedback from our school community in concert with the data in the indoor air quality sensors to ensure that our bond money is being used and is informed by our community needs and lived experiences. I am concerned that meaningful feedback about issues like temperature control and safe routes to school will be discarded as irrelevant rather than reviewing holistic solutions appropriate for now and the future. Our kids are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Appreciate all of our public commenters for taking the time out to speak to the Board of Education on so many issues tonight and we do not take your presence here at our meeting lightly and we really appreciate your time. At this time, we will move to the approval of our, no, we won't. We will actually move to union or committee comments. Are there any committee comments this evening? Okay, seeing then, are there any union comments this evening? Okay, seeing then, we will now move on to board director comments. Student Director Segal, we will begin with you if you're ready.
Thank you, President Brown. I would like to thank everyone that came out for a public comment. I don't really have any comments for tonight, but I would just really like to thank my Berkeley High community for the support and care we have shown for each other over the past few weeks. After the tragic incident that happened a few weeks ago, students took to social media to repost GoFundMe links to support the family. It was incredibly funded and it had great response and students really sent out a web of support through the ways that they could. That Monday, a memorial was set up in the C2 Gallery full of flowers and messages and candles and stays as ever vibrant and active as it was then. Whenever I pass that in the morning, I continue to see it full of love and support and grief. But we are all in this together and I've just seen again how our community has bounced back and really truly supported each other over these rough times. I love that my community is like this and I feel great to be a part of it every day. And I'm so devastated by the tragedy that has happened, but I'm so proud of my community for the way that we have responded. So thank you. I look forward to tonight.
Thank you as well, Student Director Segal, for those beautiful comments. At next, we will go to Director Alpern.
Thank you, President Brown. I also don't have any comments tonight and I can't say it any better than Student Director Segal did. So I just want to thank you for your comments and for being there for your community and representing your community here tonight, Director Segal. Thanks so much.
Definitely. Director Sai Nai, are you ready?
Yeah, I too want to thank President Brown for starting the meeting with a moment of silence and want to send my sincere condolences and love and support to the family, the friends, and the entire community that really has come together around the loss of Angel and Jazzy. I also really want to extend appreciation to our site staff and our district staff for jumping in the moment they heard on the weekend to try to bring together resources on an immediate level for our school communities at Berkeley High, but also at Longfellow and Sylvia Mendez and in the community. And I think collectively, the ability to come together and show the community that we're in it together can't be minimized, but the loss to the family is one and to the community that will continue and we need to not is one and to the community that will, will continue and we need to not, you know, in two weeks, I'll be gone. I think the other thing is, you know, gun violence and violence, you know, we heard in our public comment today, the violence that surrounds us, Berkeley is not immune to it. It's not an Oakland issue and a Richmond issue and Berkeley gets the aftermath. It's like we are all part of the, of the dynamics that are going on in our community and the more we can work together to get guns up our streets and to deal with more of a community health approach, you know, the more I think we can come up with solutions. And the only other thing I want to just comment is, as usual, I really want to thank the people who come out for public comment to take time out of your evening and share not only your, your opinions, but in many times your personal stories. And I can't extend my appreciation more. And I really want to applaud and I'm so excited about our career technical education program from the middle school through the high school. I want to applaud Wen Skills for the amazing program that he's developed over the last few years along with all of the other staff. And there was just, I think, the board members received from our consultant Stephanie Allen, a great article that was from KQED really talking about the research that now very clearly shows that students who are engaged in career technical education that's relevant and contemporary to our current economy and our current communities have a higher likelihood of going into post-secondary education. And Berkeley High has totally stepped up with career tech ed over the last ten years, eight to ten years. And now that it's really blossoming in the middle school, I think we've got the potential for really creating a pathway for our students. And I appreciate the demographic data in the super, in the STEM summer camp because it really is looking at working to, you know, eliminate the disparities in pathways in STEM education. So I really want to applaud the team as well as all of the, the students and staff that worked on making that camp exciting and enriching for all of the students that were involved. So thank you all for all your work.
Thank you, Director Sai Nai. Vice President Babett, are you ready?
No, thank you.
Okay. Director Vastidav, are you ready?
Yes, thank you, President Brown. I also wanted to thank everybody who came to share all of their diverse public feedback tonight. And, you know, as Director Sai Nai said, you know, sharing your personal stories, your children's experience in our schools, to me, that's extremely valuable. And thank you just for taking the time to be with us tonight. I also want to thank and appreciate President Brown for honoring our beautiful students, nuestros niños Ángel and Jay-Z, who were taken from us far too soon. I wanted to thank all the students and community members who came together to support the Sotelo family last week at Longfellow and echo Director Sai Nai's comments to thank our staff and superintendent who amidst their own grief found a thoughtful and beautiful culturally responsive way to host a vigil for Ángel and Jay-Z's family. And I think, you know, we started that process of mourning as a community and what I felt at Longfellow last week as hard and heartbreaking as that night was, I really saw the profound love of our community with Doña María Sotelo and her family. We're not only one district, but one family working through the pain of our collective loss and our collective grief. So I'm thank you all and particular thanks to Mr. Aaron Machuat Longfellow, who I know worked really hard that weekend to make that event happen. I'm seeing some comments in Spanish. I also wanted to thank our CTE program for the wonderful presentation tonight. I loved the, there's so much about our CTE program that I can say and that I love. But I really like hearing the stories of peer mentors because I think that really makes a difference from having a middle schooler and how, how he looks up to the high schoolers. I'm just that peer mentorship element of, of the program, especially the summer program is so valuable. And I think it's such an empowering experience for our students of color. I myself loved my own CTE mentors, my own STEM mentors when I was in high school. And I know that I was able to be, you know, the first girl in my family to graduate from college because I had that support from my STEM teacher. So I just wanted to give a shout out and a profound thanks to our CTE program for, for the great work that you do and for always keeping our most vulnerable students and our, and our equity goals at the center of your work. I wanted just to end my comments by thanking our thirteen campuses who participated in celebrating International Walk and Roll to School Day today. I had a lot of fun today at Longfellow doing travel tallies and also at Willard. It was a lot of fun just being out there giving the kids stickers that can mark how they got to school and celebrating the kids that had biked or walked to school. I also want to give a shout out to our superintendent who I heard roller skated to school today. So I don't know if you guys have seen that picture. It's out there. And we have a pretty cool and brave superintendent who decided to, to roller skate to school with our children today. And lastly, just wanted to remind folks that, you know, there's still, you know, concerning pandemic news, I was at a meeting this week with CDPH and they announced that case rates are increasing in Europe, that we're probably going to see case rates increase in the United States in a couple of weeks, particularly in California. So just, you know, reminder that over-the-counter testing continues to be important as we look for ways to mitigate the impact of COVID-19 in our schools. And with that, thank you all for being here and I look forward to our discussion.
Thank you, Director Vastidav, for your comments. Vice President Babett, you have no choice but to be ready now. So hopefully you're ready.
Yes, it's good to go last because then I can just echo a lot of my board colleagues' comments and not have to repeat them. And so I do also want to thank Longfellow for hosting the vigil for Jay-Z and Angel. And in addition to extending our condolences and appreciation for the love that we've shared and the ways in which we've wrapped our arms around each other and this family. I talked about us really coming together to address gun violence in our community. And so in that vein, I'm going to host a Stop the Violence kickback on Sunday, October twenty-third from two to five P M. It's going to be really casual. Bring your picnic chairs, bring your blankets, bring your food. Bring the things that, the ideas that you want us to, to really begin to hone in on, to figure out how we can actually make a difference in our community. It's time to take our grief to action. And so this is going to be step one of my efforts in trying to figure out how we can actually address these problems as a community more diligently. Which leads me to point two. I want to thank Councilmember Terry Taplin, who does have a ceasefire working group. And we met on October twenty-seventh, bringing together many constituents from our community that are working on gun violence and just violence in particular in our community. And so I'm looking forward to, to what that group is going to be able to develop and implement. And then if you want to get the final details, though, about all of these things, you have to email me at Laura at LauraBabett.com. That's one B and two Ts because I have to finalize many of the, the dates and the speakers and the things that we're going to do. So email me to make sure that you get the official information for these events. On this Friday, however, I am going to host office hours from five to six P M. At El Patilla Restaurant at twenty fifty-six San Pablo Avenue. And then from six to eight o'clock, there will also be a voter information event. So feel free to come and hang out for that as well. Lastly, I want to thank all the parents who came out to talk about our curriculum and our dyslexia initiatives, our literacy action plan, as well as the Bell redesign schedule. I did attend that meeting, the last town hall that we had, board colleagues. And I want you to know that the emails that our parents have been sending, I can say I saw firsthand the reasons why they've been sending us those informations. And I agree completely with the remarks from Emily Baldwin and Cecily Rose. And I've already spoken with our superintendent about this and I want to thank our associate superintendent, who was also at that town hall meeting. And so we are going to commit to full community engagement, collaboration and transparency. And so I just want to thank our, our leadership team for embracing those comments and embracing the need to really use E for engagement in the ways in which we as a board intended it to be when we sent this back to the, to, to the community to actually have some true engagement. So that's all I wanted to say. And thank you again to everyone for coming out and I will save the rest of my detailed comments for the literacy action plan discussion.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. I do want to echo the sentiments of my board colleagues and thanking all of you again who came out for public comment, especially those who shared their vulnerable stories with us and in the ways that they were impacted by our education in the school district in an effort to ensure that future generations are not impacted in the same way. So thank you so much for that. Additionally, as was highlighted earlier about the family of Ángel, Ángel Angel and Jay-Z, I want to, of course, you know, thank our community for how they showed up and showed out for the family and want to just encourage us to continue to do that, you know, in the next couple of days, weeks, months and years to come and continue to, you know, wrap your arms around the family, but also wrap your arms around each other, especially to our students at Longfellow, at Berkeley High and at Sylvia Mendez. Additionally, as we are offering love to one another, we also have opportunities to celebrate our community. And this month, we have three important special things to celebrate. We are celebrating the last three days of Latinx Heritage Month. We are also celebrating LGBTQ plus History Month as well as Filipino X American History Month as well here in BUSD. So as you can see, all of our board directors each have a background as well as their superintendent, each have a background that represents all three of those exciting events. And I look forward to participating in and highlighting the events that we have to come. I'm sure that Superintendent Formarthell is her favorite thing to do to announce our events. So we'll leave that to her. But there's a special event on the twenty-ninth that is updated on our website presented by Bahia for Dia de los Muertos. That's a celebration on the twenty-ninth. Sorry, had to beat you to it. And I'm really looking forward to celebrating that experience with all of our community members. In addition, I do want to take this opportunity to highlight a very special member of our board and our student director Ian Segal. I've been on Berkeley High's campus pretty recently. And every time I step foot on campus, students are telling me either about an office hour that they went to with you or that are about a conversation that they had with you, whether we're talking about the Bell redesign, talking about how to support the community during this tragic time of loss or in general. And so you are on fire on campus. And I really appreciate the ways in which you are representing not just your student board, but representing all of us as board directors. So thank you so much, Student Director Segal. Finally, uh oh, I forgot the finally. So then I guess I'll just end it here. And if I think about it again, it'll come back to me after Superintendent Formarthell. But I'll go ahead and pass it over to you right now, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Brown. And good evening, Berkeley community. A couple of things will be repeated in October this month. The district is recognizing and celebrating LGBTQ plus History Month and Filipino X American History Month. As part of our work to offer culturally relevant curriculum and to honor and welcome all students, families and staff in our schools, we celebrate and uplift heritage and history months throughout our school year and not just during the month, but every single day is our goal. And we've shared family guides and teaching resources both for Filipino X American History Month and LBGTQ History. And those resources are available on our website as well. I want to be the first, because none of our directors knew this, to congratulate and celebrate our VHS first robotics team, five, four, one, nine, Berkeleyum. What? I love that name. They were crowned champions of the two thousand twenty-two Cal Games Robotics Competition, winning the event in an alliance with IO Mets from Richmond High School and Homestead Robotics from Cupertino. So we had fifty-four VHS teammates participate this past weekend in the exciting competition. And we're going to be cheering for them at their next competition, the Madera Mad City Tournament, which takes place in November. And we yet again expect to come in and win. Okay, I'm not going, okay. Go Berkeleyum. We also got our exercise today. As Director Vastidav said, I was on my roller skates. Y'all should, it was, that was a hot mess. But we celebrated International Walk and Roll to School Day. Across our district, we had students and staff walk, roll, skateboards, bikes, roller skates to school. And this is really a great example of how we can work together as a school community to make our streets safer, to reduce traffic and to improve air quality and have lots of fun, too. We know we had about fourteen bike trains that happened today. And a bike train, if you don't know, is when groups of students accompanied by adults bicycle a pre-planned route to school. Students were greeted by caregivers and staff at school interested with smiley faces and stickers and mood-changing pencils to congratulate them for using their active, to be, to be, to activating and coming out to school in these very creative ways. It was a lot of fun. My skates are super cute. You guys should see them. I do want to take some time to share some important schedule changes and acknowledge not only the tragic and painful loss that we've experienced as a school community, but also what we witnessed in the last ten days that I would say really highlights that BUSD and that Berkeley community is a community that is full of love. So first, in terms of an announcement, the VHS Homecoming game will continue as scheduled for this Saturday, but the Homecoming dance is being postponed. Principal Igoso will reach out to the school community and update on the new schedule for the dance. So we're not canceling the dance. We're just postponing the dance out of respect, quite honestly. And so VHS is also working on setting new dates for our Title IX Campaign Week and Spirit Week. And we're going to continue to offer students counseling supports as our school community agrees. But we also thought it was important for the community to know that we are having our game. But we're also trying to be respectful to what the VHS community and our larger Berkeley community is going through. I think one of our directors said this already as well, but since many of our staff and community members have really been working to organize our October fifteenth Nuextra Henta, our people event and celebration. We've actually decided to also pause on that as we again are really being respectful to the impact of the loss on our community that we've recently experienced. And so we've made the decision to actually cancel the Saturday's event at Longfellow Middle School and to instead partner with Latinos Unidos de Berkeley and Bahia and many other community organizations and really just promoting and supporting our October twenty-nine, twenty-ninth Dia de los Muertos event. And so again, the event for the fifteenth, the Saturday, will not be happening. We're going to do be in community with those partners that I just said on October twenty-ninth for Dia de los Muertos, sorry, Dia, Dia de los Muertos event that's going to be from ten to two at Berkeley High School. For this event, we plan to bring some of our student performers and activities, including student poets, information about district services and a Latinx staff recognition. And so we're excited to be able to combine our efforts. We're excited to be able to work with the partners that I just named in collaboration. And we're also really thoughtful to again, make sure we're being responsive to the community and the fact that we have experienced some loss. So please look out for information on our October twenty-ninth on our website and other places around our district. Finally, as has been said, and many of us know, our community has suffered great sorrow in the last week. The echoes of the sorrow will be felt in our community for a very long time. I think the tragedy reminded us yet again how cruel and unfair life can be. Our collective anger, confusion, grief and frustration was documented in various forms. But at the risk of saying this too soon, I want to acknowledge the beauty, the beauty in these otherwise dark times. What I've learned about the character of this Berkeley community. Like you've heard from many of our directors and our student director, there were adults that while grieving themselves and overwhelmed by the weight of leading through such tragedy, responded with strength, grace and compassion. Our district staff put everything else on hold to directly support and be present at VHS Longfellow and Sylvia Mendez. I saw students, some who didn't even know each other, hold and care for one another. Neighboring districts even reached out to offer support and groups and BUSD families from all over organized to help. There were vigils. There were GoFundMes that far exceeded the ask. And a scholarship has now been created to recognize and honor the lives and the legacy of the two brothers. There were altars and memorials that all spoke to how much love exists in our community and how Berkeley really Um there were altars and memorials that all spoke to how much love exists in our community and how Berkeley really wraps around its own. And so likely, this is, this is no surprise to to many of you who are hearing this. You've been here for some time. Um but for me, this felt new and and quite honestly comforting during a very heartbreaking and sad time. Um unfortunately, this is not my first time having students pass, nor is this my first time feeling the impact of loss to gun violence. And so um I'm I'm sad to say that it's actually too many times that I've had this experience and have to had to lead through this experience. Still, what I want to highlight um and what I want us to kind of hold and really recognize is that this is one of the few times that I was actually in awe at the overwhelming outpour of love and support and community in so many different ways. Berkeley is a very special place. Um I always end my 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 emails and everything with this term that says in community, and I would say that in community has a totally new meaning now after I've been able to experience and be a part of this community, holding each other during time of loss and grief. And so I just want to acknowledge that and celebrate that. Um and I want to thank you each for being an an critical example for me of Berkeley love and what it means to be community here over these past several days. Thank you, Madam President. That's the end of my my comments.
Thank you as well, Superintendent Formarthel. Um at this time, we will transition to uh the approval of our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar? Moved by Director Alper, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. Uh Ms. Charis, can you please call the role?
Student Director Segal?
Yes.
Director Babitt, I'm sorry, Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babitt?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Uh we are going to move to our uh one and only discussion item for this evening, item thirteen point one, which will be our first quarter report on the dyslexia settlement as well as the implementation of our literacy action plan. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to staff uh for this presentation, and as they are preparing, um it's very important for us to know that uh there was a board director who knew about the winning of the uh robotics team over the weekend, and that is Director Alper because uh his son was on the robot, or is on rather, the robotics team. So congratulations to uh our baby jacket and baby Alper for uh winning uh that competition over the weekend.
We're gonna be replaying this part of the board meeting every, every night in our house for the next year.
As you should, as you should. All right, staff, whenever you are ready, we are ready to receive uh the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh doing this presentation is our new Associate Superintendent of Instruction. I'm not sure if the community has met her. Um but I introduce you to you all, um Jill Hogan Dyke, who is going to be doing our first quarter report on our dyslexia settlement implementation of our literacy action plan. Jill?
Uh thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, Board of Directors. Um I'm happy to be here tonight um to share an overview of the first quarter report on the dyslexia settlement, which covers the time period between July first and September thirtieth. A copy of the quarter one report is attached tonight, tonight's board agenda for um people in the audience who would like to read more. We call this work the Literacy Action Plan because while the work stems from a legal settlement, we know that our primary function as a learning organization is to provide high-quality instruction to our students. And we've recognized that there are things that we need to improve in order to ensure that we're promoting successful reading practices and providing early and appropriate intensive reading instruction. Next slide, please. Um tonight, we have two key outcomes for this presentation. We will share background and goals for the dyslexia settlement and provide an overview of the quarter one report, highlighting actions taken this period and sharing next steps. Because this is the first report, the focus tonight is to share an overview and provide a shared orientation to this work. This is the first of twelve quarter reports that will be shared over the course of the next three years. So we are aiming for a broad overview, recognizing that we are at the beginning stages of some of this work and will have additional opportunities throughout the year to share progress. Next slide. First, I want to start by grounding us in our mission, which is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. Alongside our mission are four Es, excellence, equity, engagement and enrichment are what we strive to achieve in this work and what we do in service of our students each and every day. Toward excellence, BUSD aims to provide effective and appropriate reading programs to its students to enable them to become successful readers. And toward equity, we equity, we also aim to reduce the achievement gap in student performance for students who with or who are at risk of reading disabilities. Next slide. To contextualize this work alongside our district mission, there are a number of other plans and initiatives that set set forth goals and strategies to address our students' academic and social emotional needs. The LCAP or Local Control Accountability Plan has five goals and sixty-three actions. Um the African-American Success Framework stemming from our Black Lives Matter Resolution identifies five goals and fifty-one actions to better serve our African-American students. Our CSACE plans intend to address significant disproportionality as it relates to the over-representation of Black and African-American students into special education and outlines twenty-two actions across four goals. And our Literacy Action Plan, the focus of this presentation holds four goals and thirty-five actions. Um and these are, these are not uh all of the plans that exist in BUSD. Um the Literacy Action Plan is one of several that intends to support BUSD to organize toward our mission to excellence in education and equitable outcomes for students. What the Literacy Action Plan highlights and the gaps that it tends to address is echoed in our other plans, which is a need to strengthen our tier one and tier two supports, focus intervention on identified student populations, provide PD and other opportunities for cross-collaboration and to use data to monitor progress. In any continuous improvement effort, we need to be super clear about what we're trying to improve, what actions we are taking and why we're taking them, and understand how we will know if those actions led to improvement. We also have to be able to effectively implement and monitor these actions along the way. Next slide. For background, for those of you who are new to the subject, as part of a settlement agreement, BUSD is required to take steps to refine and improve policies and practices to better address services for students with reading disorders or suspected to have reading disorders. But it also gives us an opportunity to reflect on our current practices and continue to build a comprehensive literacy program that drives toward our district mission of academic excellence. We want this work to better align our systems and strengthen partnerships in ways that will enable us to reduce inequities and support all of our students toward grade level proficiency and the achievement of academic excellence uh uh that's described in our mission. Next slide. The Literacy Action Plan centers on the four goals that you see here. Goal one involves improving general education, reading and language arts achievement. Goal two is honing in on our tier two and tier three reading and language art supports. Goal three um centers around monitoring our literacy improvement work, and goal four seeks to improve the quality of our IEP goals and five oh four plans, monitor progress and provide research-based interventions. Next slide. This slide represents a timeline that we will be following through the course of the three-year term of the settlement. You will see that this covers three years, starting in twenty twenty-two, running through twenty twenty-five. While November twenty twenty-one is the effective date of the settlement, by agreement between BUSD and the plaintiffs, the start date for year one was changed to July first, twenty twenty-two, which means that the reporting dates have been adjusted to reflect, reflect this revised timeline. The BUSD team is required to share quarterly reports. You see the timing of those reports outlined on the bottom of this slide. Our outside monitor, Mr. George Ellis, a professor at UC Berkeley and Director of the UC Berkeley Reading and Literature Project, shared the monitoring plan overview with the board in June. He will present monitoring reports twice yearly, beginning next month in November, and then again in May twenty twenty-three. The BUSD team, um oh, actually, sorry, Liz, can you click one, two, three times, because I think those dates will come across the bottom slide. There we go. Um the BUSD team has also contracted with a outside consultant, Dr. Kim Givens, who serves as the Director of the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement at the University of Minnesota. She has been working with the district's implementation team to review and provide feedback in the district's literacy plan, and will be working with our team to review our policies to support literacy development, including the use of MTSS and advising us on work to refine and improve our practices. We meet with Mr. Ellis and Dr. Givens at least monthly to review our progress and to get input on our next steps. The Literacy Action Plan also acknowledges that this work takes time. In order for us to adjust policies and prove practices, we need to address root causes that may not be immediately visible. It also takes time to understand all the interconnected parts of the other plans and initiatives to ensure that we are being efficient and effective with our resources and avoid redundancies and duplicative efforts. This is systems work, and it's work that we need to do in order to support teaching and learning that happens every day in our classrooms across the district. Next slide. Um because this is the first quarter report, I do want to take a moment here to orient you to how we're reporting the status of the thirty-five actions um for achieving these articulated goals. In coordination with our outside consultants, we have established tracking codes that you see here. Work um that is being completed, has been completed is in green. On track in yellow, approaching is in orange, barriers are coded red and tasks not yet started are in white. Some of the actions are technical and the lift to accomplish these is not so great. For example, action one is to form a BUSD implementation team. That is work that has been completed and we have coded that as green. Other actions are structural and will require more time and attention and may have additional related factors that need to be addressed before they can be achieved. For example, action four, the USD will review and implement reforms to district policies, procedures and practices as needed to fulfill the goals of the Literacy Improvement Program, including RTI. There's quite a lot to unpack there, and this action is currently coded in orange as approaching. There are many interrelated components that need to be understood before we can begin the work of implementing reform that's identified in this action. Given the three-year plan, we will likely see actions in approaching and on track over the course of the, of the, these quarter reports. It's my job alongside of the superintendent and the implementation team and our central and site-based staff to ensure that this work is happening, to understand what we're learning through these efforts and then use that to inform next steps and actions that we need to take to achieve the articulated goals. Next slide. We do want to share a few highlights of the work that we have been making on the progress we have made so far. We haven't established, as I mentioned before, an implementation team with personnel identified in the settlement, plus additional members from the Ed Services Team. Additionally, we are working closely with principals and lead TSAs and site-based literacy coaches and RTI TSAs. The implementation team is meeting monthly um with our outside consultants. Uh during September, we had a two-day work session with Doctor uh with Doctor Givens. Um we've completed the beginning of the year reading assessments for Star and Dibbles. You can see the completion rates here, which is an increase from last year at the same time. The big lift coming into the school year was to establish a professional learning plan for the, for, for the school year. We launched that work in September, technically August, but September, and this will continue throughout the year. In a preview of coming attractions, there was a significant literacy focus at our district-wide PDA day earlier this week. Capacity building and professional development is critical in all of this work, and there are a number of trainings that are happening and will continue through the year and likely beyond. We're working to refine our tracking processes to understand who has and hasn't been able to complete these trainings because we know that not everyone is able to participate in every scheduled training for a variety of reasons. Staff works with principals and literacy coaches to continue to identify teachers who need trainings and to offer refresher courses. In the report, we did identify one action as a barrier. This was action number ten, which is uh primarily due to a structural challenge that the implementation team is working to address. We have experienced staffing transitions and a vacancy, so this work paused temporarily um because we did not have a lead RTI TSA. That position has posted. My understanding is that it closed, and we will be looking ahead to interviewing uh candidates for that position. In the meantime, the implementation team is working to determine how best to coordinate existing staff to take steps to make progress toward this action for tier two and tier three supports. Um but related work continues in collaboration between the Brea team, the PK eight school leadership team, literacy coaches, site-based RTI TSAs and special education case managers to support data review and plan for site-based PD focused on tier one literacy instruction. Next slide. And as we look ahead to next quarter, um between now and the end of December, we will continue to focus on our PD plan and dig into work to build a shared MTS model to align our tier one, tier, tier two and tier three supports. Um we did host a district-wide PDA, the PD, PD day this week with a primary focus on literacy um for our elementary grades and inclusive practices for the middle grades. We've also administered the initial staff survey while, and while this is a specific task identified in the settlement, we'll be looking at this information to adjust and refine our professional development plans as we move ahead. And the last slide here to close, I'm just want to reiterate that this is critical and important work. It's our work and we are committed to ensuring the academic success of our students. To do this well, we need to ensure not only the consistency of purpose, policy and practice called out here in this quote by Michael Fulon, but also have the collective commitment to action. I've only been here for two months, but I have seen this commitment in action. Um coming up next, George Ellis will share the first monitoring report of the year at a November board meeting, and the second quarter report will be submitted in January. There is a lot of collective momentum for this work, and we are working hard to better understand the intentions and implications of all our plans in order to pace the work and provide space for learning and growth in ways that will be supportive to our students, teachers, school leaders and related support staff. This work doesn't happen overnight, and we are in it together for the long haul, and we'll look forward to sharing successes and challenges as we move forward together. And that will conclude the presentation.
Uh thank you so much for uh your presentation, Jill. Thank you for um your hard work on this as well. Uh we'll now entertain questions from the Board of Education. Uh I'm gonna start with my first question, and then um direct, uh Vice President Babitt has a question following. Um so tonight, we heard um a lot of advocacy around curriculum and around the need for implementation of uh new curriculum. And so I was wondering if you could take, I'm sorry if I uh also caught you off guard with this question, but I'm wondering if you could take some time um to talk about uh how we address curriculum um and especially in this case.
Okay. Um I will start, and my colleagues are here, so I'll invite um Rose James, if she has any additional information or Superintendent, if you have any additional information to also, also weigh in. I think our, uh you know, our approach to curriculum is this, we have existing adopted curriculum um that BUSD has adopted. We have the Teachers College work um as a part of our main literacy curriculum, but we also have adopted Fast Track to Phonics, which is relatively new. And we are, Fast Track to Phonics is a curriculum BS, BUSD is using to provide the phonics instruction. It's this, it's a systematic phonics program that builds skills around phonemic awareness, letter sound and all of those um uh uh early literacy skills necessary for fluent word recognition that would lead to comprehension. Um what we really are trying to do and our focus for this year is connect those assessments to understanding how we best utilize the existing curriculum to meet the needs of students. So the Dibbles and Star assessment will provide us levels of information about the gaps that student skills, uh gaps in student skills and will allow teachers to make effective decisions about what they need to include in their instruction. So we are not yet at a place where we are talking about adopting curriculum, because we do have existing curriculum
So we are not yet at a place where we are talking about adopting curriculum, because we do have existing curriculum, and we're working to understand that intersection between the assessment and the existing curriculum that we have, and if we need to make shifts and adjustments in curriculum, that we will be ready to do that over the, over a period of time.
Um, thank you for your response, and especially for highlighting our new program. Um, we hope there's a lot of success around that. Vice President Babid.
Yes, I wanted to um piggyback on the the caller who says she didn't get her um DIBELS, her child's DIBELS results. How are we making sure that that information is provided uh to our parents? And I also want to know how do um community members and parents partner in this um literacy action plan? And then thirdly, can you speak to, a lot of the actions say that we are monitoring them and that we are doing um, we're doing a lot of these things, but is not really telling us in the program how we're monitoring them? So can you um give us some insight on how these actions are being monitored, which leads to how they're being implemented as well?
I'm just writing for a second, so I make sure I remember both both questions. Um, yeah, definitely heard the comment earlier in public comment about trying to get access to DIBELS scores. Uh, the DIBELS assessment is relatively new, I believe we launched it last last year. And so as with any new assessment, we're learning how to use, operationalize, and share that information. What I can say is that parent conference, parent-teacher conferences are coming up, and the DIBELS um uh information can and will be reviewed at this time. Uh, we have done training with teachers around how to interpret the DIBELS subtest scores. Um, and this is, you know, it's uh, it's a lot of information that could be a lot to take in without having somebody to guide you through understanding what these reports mean. So we really are looking at the conferences for the week of, I think they're happening, the week of October twenty-fourth. During the conferences, teachers can share the DIBELS results in a way that will be supportive and help inform parents' understanding about where their student is currently performing in these foundational reading skills. Um, we're also drafting a document to share with teachers so that they have some tips about how to discuss the results of the screener with parents, and we're going to be going over this document with principals at their uh principal meeting next week so that that information can be shared with teachers ahead of the conference time. Um, your second question was around uh monitoring uh, and you were talking about, are you talking specifically about the monitoring of individual actions or the monitoring of the actions articulated in the settlement agreement?
I didn't realize they were separate.
Yeah, well, because there's sort of subactions. I mean, I guess what I will say that, you know, any successful implementation uh involves accountability and monitoring for implementation. Um, and the first step to that is setting expectations about what we want to see happening. Um, one way that we do that is through professional development and training. Um, so we're, what we're learning is that we don't have uh consistent ways across the system to track which teachers have received which training and who is attending what. Um, so that's definitely something that we um need to get a better handle on, but we have had trainings for very, for specific areas like the DIBELS training, the Wilson intervention. Um, we've had several after-school trainings on fa- on Fast Track, and in terms of monitoring, we're, you know, keeping a log of, you know, what these trainings entail, um, the materials that were used, and then who attended them. Um, we then work with principals and literacy coaches to continue to identify teachers who need that additional training. Um, some of the components of the settlement re-involve bigger system shifts. So how are we acknowledging and developing an MTSS system to be really clear about how students move from tier-one to tier-two to to tier-three? Um, that is not necessarily as concrete as like keeping a log, but we do meet regularly. Um, each uh director on the Ed Services Team is responsible in some way, shape, or form um for one or more of these goals, and these are ongoing conversations that we have with the team. Um, and as we are getting data, for example, we just closed the first DIBELS window. We'll be looking at that data, we'll try to understand um how that work will then influence uh future PD plans. We also get feedback around PD. Um, so all of this is a work in progress, but for the purposes of tracking progress on the settlement, we'll be using the first quarter, the quarterly reports to show you um where we are um on each of those actions.
Great, and then my third question was around how do um family and community members and parents um engage with the literally literacy action plan, implementation team, and all of those?
Yes, thank you. Um, so we, uh, well, obviously, by participating in in meetings like this, as we start to better understand um what this information is telling us and what we're learning along the way, we are inviting, you know, our school site leaders to be engaged in conversations with their school site councils. Um, and any of those conversations could happen at a school site level. Um, and then fam- so families who want to get engaged should definitely be connecting with their site leaders. Um, and as we start to refine our processes, there are a number of things that we're gonna seek feedback and input on from our our various educational partners and stakeholders. So we'll be sure to share that information um so that families can weigh in and um share their feedback with us.
Great, thank you. I'll come back after my other colleagues.
Okay, uh, next, I believe, was Director Alper, followed by Director Vasudev, and then Director Saini.
Thanks, President Brown, and um thanks so much, Assistant Superintendent. Um, my question was some, was sort of following on President Brown's about curriculum and um, you know, our, our, we're not the educational experts, so we don't, you know, we don't particularly have expertise in which curriculum we should be adopting. Um, but I think I, I think our role is to sort of make sure that the processes are in place, that we're periodically evaluating the curriculum and responding to teacher concerns, parent concerns, student concerns. Um, and so I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about or remind us what the process is, because we don't really, sometimes we approve, you know, books or or so, once in a while curriculum, but it's usually not um, again, because we're not the educational experts, it's not usually very, we don't know what we're talking about when we're talking about the actual curriculum. But we hear a lot about curriculum, we hear a lot about the Berkeley High math curriculum, um, and we hear a lot of, uh, we hear a lot about TCRWP and and have, and have heard and talked about that curriculum for years, and it has its defenders, and it has its critics, and it's been in the news a lot recently. Um, and um, and part, I think, part of our adoption of the phonics curriculum was in response to some of that curriculum, and I guess I lost track of wh- when things happened, but maybe also in response to the settlement, or maybe it was before that. Um, but what, what would, what would trigger a review, and I'm not advocating for it, I'm just asking, what would trigger a review of, for example, the um, K-five literacy curriculum, or for that matter, the Berkeley High math curriculum? Is there a, is there a set, you know, every five years we initiate a review, or do we wait until um, teachers or or parents complain enough? Like, what, how does that work?
Yep, um, so I'm gonna zoom out to to the, what I think is the bigger question, Director Alper, which is, you know, we do have a process for curriculum adoption. And on a, on a big picture, and I'm still learning about how the USD maps this out, but on a, on a big picture level, you have a number of content areas, and theoretically, you would put them on what is generally a s- a seven-year cycle to do curriculum review and adoption, um, depending on the subject area, and there should be a rotation. So what I do know, this year, the USD um has initiated a science adoption co- uh committee. Um, the board policy states that we need to uh pull the committee together, that we have a transparent evaluation process of curriculum and any new materials that we are considering that would involve opportunities for families, community members, teachers, and school leaders to weigh in. And then that selection and evaluation of the material would be uh coordinated with uh a theoretically a curriculum department, um, so that will fall on the Ed Services Team, and then we would bring that recommendation then to the board. Um, my understanding in BUSD, that happens in two parts, there's just sort of the, like a first reading and a second reading, but I don't think that that's the language that that we use. Um, I think in the context of the Literacy Action Plan, where we are right now is understanding that there is a concern that we do have students that um are not being identified early enough for earlier intervention. And so we do need to understand what, what does that look like? So what does the data tell us about where students are um, uh, where those student learning gaps are? I think one of the public commenters also mentioned uh recognizing the impact of distance, distant learning, distance learning um, and the pandemic may have had on that learning trajectory. And we are really looking at those assessments and connecting our teachers and uh other support staff to that existing curriculum. What is not yet clear is whether or not then there are additional gaps that would warrant us to be, have to take a step back to look at whether or not a new adoption was needed. Um, so we're, we're still at the beginning stages of that, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, yeah, it does, thank you. And then with TCRWP in particular, um, is that um we don't have a whole, we don't, we have Ed Services, but we don't have a separate curriculum de- department, um, Superintendent shaking her head. Um, we told you we were a smaller district than you're coming from. Um, so, I mean, do, are you all following, you know, the the various? Um, you're nodding, Ms. James. But you, you know, what can you tell us about sort of where, where, where you all are on TCRWP? And how it meshes with the phonics curriculum, and whether, whether you think that, you know, we might need to to look at it?
Um, and I'll invite our Superintendent to weigh in on this, but this is, this is not a new conversation for either one of us. It was definitely a conversation that um was surfacing um during my time in SFUSD. So I, I just want to acknowledge and hear, uh, acknowledge that um folks that are expressing concerns that they have been heard. There are, um, you know, there are uh, there are various opinions on uh our, the work from Teachers College, and there's various opinions on more direct instruction through phonics. And I think what I've learned in, in my time as an educator, both as a classroom teacher at elementary, middle, and high school, and as a site leader and a central, central office leader, is that both are important, right? We need to have a, a direct, we need to have a curriculum that provides that direct instruction for those skill sets that are important for reading, and we need to provide rich and engaging literature experiences for our students that are culturally and linguistically responsive. Um, so both are true. If we're leaning too far in any one direction, then something is missing, right? And so what, you know, I think my job now is to understand is how, how is that happening in our BUSD schools? And um where are the gaps? Are they, are they everywhere? Are they in certain grades? And then what might that look like so that we can better attend to the needs of students? I don't know, uh, Superintendent, do you add anything to that?
I, I think Ruth, were you about to say something?
Nope, sorry, Ruth.
Oh, okay. No, I could add a lot to that. Um, I think echoing and doing a lot of what you just said, but I think not but, and I, I really want us to be um mindful that curriculum in and of itself is not the end-all, be-all, right? Um, the curriculum is oftentimes what you teach, if, if, if actually used and followed with fidelity. But there's so much more when you think about the pedagogy and and how you teach and how you interact with students, and the types of questions that you ask, that is the, that is the kind of icing on the cake that I think folks oftentimes forget about. Um, and so it's really for us to provide quality instruction and to, and to do the things that I think is the spirit of this literacy action plan, and things that all of us on this screen want to do, we, we have to balance and hold both. We have to make sure we have a strong um curriculum and resources in our classrooms, and we have to make sure our teachers have the pedagogy um and know what moves to make. We need to make sure that our teachers, um, our educators understand the various assessments and know how to use those assessments to then inform their next steps instructionally. Um, and so that's the, that's the DIBELS, and that's a whole bunch of other assessments that we have, making sure that they understand it. So they can say, when I see this score on this student lands here, then what do I do? What's my instructional response? Um, I can go on and on, I, I will say that it's complex. I think even in thinking about the um, when do we change curriculum and 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 how do we change? But I think that Jill spoke a lot to the how, and then there's the, there's just kind of like the technical win, like, oh, after seven years, we evaluate. But one of the things that we're trying to do is understand if it's just the curriculum um, that, that we need to address or think about. And what I mean by that is that oftentimes, you might have a curriculum, even if we adopted something new. If we don't have clear expectations um across our sites, if our educators don't know what it is that they should be teaching and how, if our expectations aren't clear, and then we don't have the, the PD and the coaching and the support to make sure they actually feel efficacious in implementing and doing those things. And then again, know how to mitigate when it's not making the connection with the babies, they're not able to access it, then it doesn't matter which curriculum we have. And that's why Jill started off by saying that our, our first step in response to um Director Babid's question, and and the whole accountability and implementation is first setting the expectation, and then making sure that the PD and the coaching is in line. And then the next step would be going in and observing classrooms, um, you know, looking at student data, of course, formative and summative, and then starting to have those conversations around where, where do we see the gaps? And what are the various reasons that those gaps might exist? And to be um, to close it all up, gaps are gonna exist for a lot of reasons. It's not always just curriculum, it's not always just pedagogy, it's not always just the assessment. And so we need to be ready to engage in this conversation, fully aware of the complexity of what it is to teach reading and be willing to, and open to, uh, uh, I guess, offering different remedies to to solve and address different issues. There's not gonna be one fix that we could apply that's gonna solve all these problems that we are all trying to tackle together.
Hey, I really appreciate all those responses. I, I did, I don't know, Ms. James, you were gonna say anything, because I saw you nodding, but I just wanted to note it, but in case you did, but thank you, everybody. Go ahead, if you.
I, I, I would add that um, I, against, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Oh.
Now I can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Um, I was just gonna say that I think one of the main complaints, um, you know, that's been in the news media, that's been lodged against TCRWP is that it lacks an explicit phonics component. And so we're really just trying to see, like, now that we've added that in, and we're really working on the PD aspect, as the Superintendent just just said, and really building the knowledge base among our teachers about why systematic phonics is important. Um, because I think that in the end, that's gonna be most, the most powerful piece, is that our teachers understand what it is and why it's important, and how to use it, and are empowered to use it in a, in a flexible way to meet students' needs and be responsive to students' needs. So I just add that.
Uh, thank you, thank you both, and Superintendent Fortmore, though, I just wanted echo what you said and give an appreciation to you for um for chiming in with that. It was really, really great. Um, next, Director Vasudev, and then Director Saini.
Yeah, I just have, um, thank you so much for this wonderful, very thoughtful presentation. And I know we spent a lot of time talking about like PD and what we're doing internally, right? To know how to use like some of our new tools, like DIBELS. Um, but what are we doing externally so that our parents know, like, how to proactively ask, like, you know, ask for these results during, like, parent-teacher conferences that we're rolling out information externally to families that might be monolingual in a culturally responsive way? Like our, you know, Arab, Arabic-speaking families, Spanish-speaking families, that they also um understand this tool and the utility of this tool during the conference? Like, is there any um external, like, one-pager or information at the, at the different um parent-teacher conferences that will, will be shared with those families as well?
Um, I am not aware if we've got a one-pager for families. Um, as I shared earlier, we're working on some key talking points um and uh information to, for teachers to be able to use in their one-on-one conversations with parents during the parent-teacher conferences. Um, I think we're gonna get some input from our principals next week. Um, and if we see that as a growing need, we can definitely work to um provide that information out to parents. But this dibbles assessment is going to be a relatively new assessment for everybody. So wanting to make sure that we have time and opportunity to go through that individually with our families, I think will be super impactful. I don't know if Rose or Ruth have anything else to add there.
Yes, maybe, oh, go ahead. Sorry, I was, I was just gonna say, just to acknowledge your question, Director Vasile, it's it's a goal. It's the, it's a goal. And, you know, Director Albert jokingly said, I told you the team is smaller. It is a goal that I that I don't want to say we're going to be able to do this this grading period or this this conference period, but it's definitely a long-term goal. Our first step, as our associate soup just said, is really to make sure our our educators are familiar, that we've set the expectation that at conferences, this is the, this is the data set that our families are engaged in, that they know how to engage the families, and we know that that's not enough. That's where we are. I was also just a big shift and and a, you know, a big lift for our team to get ready for. Our next step is to, as you said, create, maybe not one pages, but definitely create documents and resources that will help our families engage with the data on their own. You know, videos and things like that. I'm gonna really mute myself because I see my team looking. It's a very small team, but I would say that after we get these kind of foundational things in place, that is a goal that we are are definitely looking to make sure that our families can access the data, but also can understand what they're reading when they see the data. And there are also some things that we can provide for our families going forward around the types of questions to ask, for example, during conferences and things like that. We're not there yet.
No, no worries. I was gonna ask, is there a limited utility for like English language learners? Like, how do they use this new tool? Like, you know, like, for certain populations, is there limited utility to the new assessments?
To the dibbles assessment?
Yeah, to the dibble assessment.
Ruth, I don't know if you want to answer that one. I don't see, yeah.
So there's a Spanish, Spanish version of the assessment, EDEL, that we use at Sylvie Mendez, which can be available at other sites, but it's primarily used at Sylvie Mendez. So it's a different assessment, which is given in Spanish to help assess the reading levels of the students on that campus. Otherwise, the students generally take the assessment in English.
Got it. So if you're an English language learner and you're Spanish speaking, you'd present both data points. I guess like at the conference, I'm just really trying to think operationally, like a teacher would present.
No, the the students take one or the other. So typically, if the students are at Sylvie Mendez, they have access to the Spanish version through EDEL. And then if they're at the other campuses, they take the English version. I don't know, Rose, if you have any more insight on that, given the trainings that we've done, but it's either one or the other. The students don't take both of the assessments. And actually, next, next school year, there's an updated version of that Spanish assessment that we'll be starting to use. It's a lot more comprehensive because the data does come out differently. They don't look exactly the same. So we'll be doing some support with Tamara and the Sylvie Mendez site around how how their assessment looks versus the regular dibbles assessment.
Directors, Saina, and then we'll go back to Vice President Babu for a second round of questions.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. It's been very informative. A couple of questions. One around alignment. And I really appreciate the slide where, you know, you were really looking at alignment across a number of different initiatives that we're having. And, you know, with the African American Success Framework, and I think you had four other things on there. I don't remember what they were off the top of my head. So one, one, it would, I'm intrigued to know. And I think Superintendent, you kind of addressed this, so I I appreciate that is it's not unusual, it sounds like, or it's a promising or best practice that you actually have multiple curricula or strategies? Because like, I know we have the Teachers College, you, you know, we have Wilson, which I think, and then we've got Fast Track. So I I'm kind of wondering how from a teacher's perspective and a professional development perspective, how is it that we're providing kind of that integrated training opportunities so that a teacher really understands how the different elements are used or when they're used? When we, for so long, you know, we started using the phonics curriculum, I guess, four years ago. Teachers College, we've been using for, seems like decades. And now there's another element coming in. And so I I'm just curious how that rolls out and how does it really map? And and for the PD, were teachers required to take it? Or was it voluntary? Were there other options that they could take during the PD day? And so I'm just curious about how all that fits together. And I, because my sense is that a lot of this is really looking at the tier one approach, you know, so that we can do that early identification. So I'm curious about that. And I do believe, contrary to what a couple of, I think Director Alper said, we do have some educational experts on the board, being President Brown, but I'm not one of them. So, you know, kind of a layperson's approach to help me understand. Because it sounds to me like a lot is now kind of getting pushed onto the teachers, and I don't know how it gets integrated.
Yep. I think that that's an excellent question and one that we're definitely trying to wrestle with. I mean, and particularly when you're thinking about elementary school where you've got multiple content entry points. And, you know, if you want, if we want to build capacity and aim toward successful application, we've got to manage what's on that plate and what the expectation is for what it is that we want them to do. I think to answer your specific question, it's specific to our October PD Day, all of our elementary teachers participated in the Literacy PD. It wasn't a workshop-style conference. We did differentiate by grade span, but there was specific focus around these structural components for literacy and reading acquisition. And then there were grade level focused workshops there. I think the work that Rose and team and Ruth and teams, so this cross collaboration between our instructional folks, principals, literacy coaches, RTI coaches, and the Brea team is really trying to help drive this connection between understanding the information that dibbles is giving us and then how to directly connect that to the reading intervention or the reading instruction that's available through Fast Track to phonics. And then if needed, the interventions that we have through either Wilson or Alexia. I don't know if there are additional details you want to add there, but I do think, you know, this cross section of how are we maximizing existing professional development time? Because we have a day or two before school starts. We have one day in October. And then we have the Wednesday release times, and we're trying to map with our PD to plan the times where we have Wednesday principal meetings, really coming together with all of those relevant departments for a focus on reading and then how that translates to the Wednesday PD days, which are are site-based. I can speak for an observation. We had a chance to go to Emerson Elementary School. And the engagement of the school team and the collaboration and coordination between the literacy coach and the RTI TSA was really phenomenal around this focus for literacy, and teachers were really engaged in a conversation. So I think we've hit a topic and a focus area that is high interest for our staff. We want to make sure that we're providing rich learning experiences for our students, and we are learning that we need to be coherent in our approach of how to do that.
So is, so is it common? The dibbles is done with everybody, right? Okay.
Well, K two.
Right, but I mean, it's the whole class, every, all of the students get assessed. Is it common or best practice, whichever you want to respond to, to have this many elements to a curriculum? Being, you know, the Teachers College, the Fast Track, the Wilson, the other one you mentioned? I mean, is that? Or should we actually, as we go through this process, be looking at simplifying, may not, may may not be the right word, but streamlining, you know, what? How many, how many offerings are classroom teachers trying to incorporate?
Yeah. I mean, I guess to the question of, is it, is it common? I mean, I have experience across three, three different school districts. And what I will say is that in each case, they're trying to find that balance, particularly with literacy instruction, right? How do we provide rich experiences for our students? And what's the necessary support to provide direct instruction when we see and recognize there are skills that need to be developed and addressed? And that can happen in a number of different ways. The culture and context matters. And how how we approach those learning opportunities for our teachers and our school leaders also matter. And I think what we're trying to do as we've launched this year is be, is start, is be super clear that there is an expectation that we need to be intentional about our reading instruction and that we need to be intentional about using the curriculum that's available to us. We also know that some, you know, sometimes we have the opportunity to choose other materials to use in our classroom, and we're not maximizing the supports that curriculum like Fast Track to phonics can provide to our students. So we're really trying to connect teachers to the resources that they have available to them already.
Thank you.
Vice President Babu.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, to Director Saina, just to remind you that the African American Success Framework, and and not just to you, to the entire community. The reason why there are so many actions in there is because they did crosswalk it. So they did take the actions from the CSIS plan and our other plans to make sure that we didn't have this kind of redundancy. And then I'm not sure if the Literacy Action Plan was crosswalked, but I know the LCAP plan was crosswalked, the CSIS plan was crosswalked, and other initiatives. Back to the curriculum. So we've been using Fast Track Phonics, as Dr. Saina ISO mentioned, since 2018. And we've been using this Hawkins curriculum for, as she said, or TWCRP for for many, many years. And clearly, we haven't been getting the results that we've wanted to see. So I think we we do need to determine how do we get to the point where we can be honest about, not just that, but, you know, we've been building on for years. Oh, it just needs more professional development. Oh, it just needs more than, oh, it just, maybe it is just what we're asking our teachers to teach, as the research shows, is not working. And I can tell you from my own child, if I would have let them stay with her in what they were calling her just right reading levels or, you know, read the word and then fill in the blank with the picture, she definitely would not be reading at this point. So I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate that our our new team is getting up to speed. But we really do have enough data at this point, and we've done a lot of efforts. It's, I remember when Maggie Riddle, who was here before Debbie Dean, she had the whole year of the reader, just to make sure that the 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 staff really understood the curriculum and how to implement the curriculum, how to use the Fast Track phonics, how to build it in, how to layer it. So it's kind of hard for me to 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 really accept that we're still at a place of setting basic expectations. I think we we need to, and maybe we haven't heard from our actual teaching body, if they actually do understand the expectations or if they actually have understood the curriculum or need all of this additional help. But we really need to, you know, when the whole nation is constantly saying this curriculum is a problem, I think it's time that we fast track addressing, and our data substantiates it. We do need to beef up our curriculum department and really take the time to go through our board policy and look at it, in 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 my opinion. Lastly, I want to say that we are having, sponsored by our SOPA Community Advisory Committee, on Monday, October 24th, a private rough cut film screening and panel discussion. It's called The Right to Read. And it's really all about what we're talking about right here and now. So I'm going to encourage people to get your tickets. It's free at tinyurl.com backslash r2r film. Again, tinyurl.com backslash r2r film. And engage in this conversation. It's going to be held at Oxford Elementary School in their theater. And again, the greatest civil rights issue of our time is the right to read. And we're seeing it in our results, how not having our students meet reading at third grade level is a problem, and it continues out through our A through G results. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Really want to make sure that what you, I really want to make sure that you did not hear me or any of us defending any curriculum. That was not, it was not about we should keep this or we should make a change. I think I was trying to speak to in response to Director Albert's, Albert's question, like, just the complexity of 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 all of it, right? And 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 how I have seen time and time again, how folks pick a curriculum, thinking like it's going to be the magic wand or the it, and it's not the it. Because even if we've done an assessment and we say we taught the teachers or we we make clear expectations around what to do and how to do it, that's still very much the beginning. Then there's the cycle of observation and feedback. Then there's getting to the classrooms and actually seeing if it's happening and then identifying what support a teacher might need if it's not happening and where it's not happening. So again, I I just wanted to say that because I know there's a lot of folks listening. I I'm not on, you know, I I work for BUSD, and my whole thing is making sure the babies can read, all the babies, right? And can not only read but write and think critically as well. And I and I just want to say, though, that I I hope that folks don't think that just adopting or purchasing a curriculum will solve all the problems, even if that same curriculum has made gains somewhere else. It's pedagogy, it's practice, it's curriculum, and it's a whole bunch of mindset and a whole bunch of other things that we have to do. And so I was just really trying to speak to the complexity of it all and want to make sure that we appreciate that before we make quick changes. And I'm not even trying to imply that that change was quick. So I want to respect the work that's been done prior to Jill and myself and Rose, who is who is fairly new, and Ruth, who is fairly new as well. And we're also committed to looking at those previous data sets and the reports and the research that you just spoke about, Director Babu, to inform our next steps as well.
Awesome, and thank you so much, and thank you, Jill, for that presentation. I think you did an excellent job of expounding from the words on paper to really making it make sense in the presentation. So thank you. It's exciting to see your first presentation, and I say it went very well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to both Ruth and to Rose for joining this presentation. And please give our extended thanks to your staff members who partner with you on this work to be able to present it and to our Associate Superintendent Jill. Thank you so much for a fabulous presentation, for answering some of our questions that you may or may not have been prepared for. But thank you so much for allowing us to go deep in this conversation and for for holding all of this work. We know you've only been here for two months, and this is an incredible amount of work to hold. So thank you so much for holding it and for holding it well. At this time, we will move on to item 14.1, which is our public hearing for the approval of the resolution for grades K through 12 for the textbook and instructional materials compliance for the fiscal year of 2022 to 2023. At this time, we'll open up the hearing. If there is anyone here for public comments specifically on the hearing, this is the perfect time to please raise your hand for the opportunity to speak to the board. Okay, seeing no hands on this. Superintendent Fortmore, though, can you help me? Does this need approval from the board? Or the hearing just needs to be open for public comment? It needs approval? Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion from the board for approval. Some move by Director Saina is their second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Vasudeva. Ms. Charles, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Siegel.
Yes.
Director Vasudeva.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babu.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. Um, before we move to our second opportunity for a public comment, I want to just make you all aware of a number of uh, informational items that we have on uh, this agenda. We typically don't take the time to talk about all of them. Uh, but we do have a a number of them. So please, in your own time, uh, engage with those items and a special appreciation to the Policy Committee who is continuing um, to do a lot of really great work. And we can see that um, which is evident on all of our informational items this evening. So thank you for that. We'll move to our second and final opportunity for public comment. If you would like to speak to the Board of Education, this is the perfect time to please raise your hand. Okay, we will start our, I see three hands raised. Um, and so we'll go ahead and start a public comment uh, with Megan and followed by Lori. And for this public comment period, we will give folks two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Megan Potente. I'm co-state director of Decoding Dyslexia California. We've taken great interest in the federal class action dyslexia lawsuit and settlement against Berkeley Unified because the failures of B U S D to identify reading difficulties and meaningfully address them are not unique to Berkeley. The negligence and wrongdoing documented here is widespread. Unfortunately, tonight's report is disappointing as it does not fully. Hang on. It does not fully present the steps needed to fulfill the agreement. I'm happy to hear individual assessment results will be shared with parents. However, the lack of district level data presented tonight is disappointing. The report states that ninety-seven percent of K two students have been assessed using Dibbles. This is a first step. But the public deserves transparent reporting of this data. How are the students doing? Where are students now in relation to where they need to be to meet benchmarks? Why was this information not communicated? The initial lawsuit found B U S D lacked effective systems for monitoring students' performance levels and progress. Reporting this information now publicly would demonstrate a commitment to do better for all B U S D students. The Literacy Action Plan poses a great opportunity for Berkeley to live up to the promises the district has made and stated here tonight to quote, reduce inequities and promote partnerships with families and the school so that every student can flourish. DDCA will continue to follow this closely and we hope for improved transparency and action. Thank you.
Next, we will have Lori DePaul, followed by Lindsay Melphell.
Hi, I'm Lori DePaul. I am just coding, uh, co-state director of Decoding Dyslexia California. There has been a failure within Berkeley Unified in ensuring that our students receive their civil right to literacy. This failure is so pervasive and systemic that it resulted in one of the few federal class action lawsuits against a school district in our country. B U S D has delayed implementing the required literacy improvement program for almost a year now. Our families need to know that you are taking the settlement you agreed to seriously. After listening to the presentation tonight, two critical components are completely missing in correcting the breach of public trust that has occurred. First, the parent voice. Parents need to be included as members of the literacy implementation team and in the lit- literacy improvement process. Second, improve transparency by sharing real data and documents with the public as to the steps B U S D is taking in this three-year implementation. Don't tell us on a timeline that you have done it. Show us what you have done. This is a pivotal point in B U S D history, and it will take your strong leadership to use the outcome of this historic lawsuit to create what could be a legacy literacy program. Our community needs your leadership now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public commenter will be Lindsay Melphell.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Novelt. I'm a parent at B U S D. Uh, it's both impressive and overwhelming that B U S D is taking on a hundred and seventy-one actions over four separate initiatives and plans. We know that not all these are literacy focused and some are purposefully duplicative. But it just emphasizes that there's an urgency to this work, including the literacy work and all of the plans and programs we have in place to improve student outcomes. This settlement demands the evaluation of core curriculum. And after a delay of a year, we're further asked to accept that the review of current systems will not be complete until April of two thousand twenty-four, according to this document. That's just a few educational months before the court monitoring ends. This assessment will help us answer these questions of is the current curriculum with the phonics patch of Fast Track meeting students' needs? But this is being delayed and we don't have the information we need to move forward. In fact, we don't have the foundations in place to commit to any of our actions because the public isn't seeing the data. Without a central, easy-to-use system to collect this data, the backbone for the success of this framework and all of the other plans are at risk. This fractured data system was described earlier by our Associate Superintendent as a challenge. We've tried to do this before with collaboration and innovation. We have this hope and I hope that we get there. We can turn things around. It starts at the very beginning with learning how to read. We haven't managed it yet, but I truly believe that we can. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Lindsay. Um, and what a great way to close our meeting, truly believing that we all can. Thank you all for a great meeting. Uh, and we look forward to seeing you at our next school board meeting. Good night, everyone. Take care.